Welcome, this is the meeting of the regular session of the South Kingstown Town Council. Date is Monday, November 8th, 2010. And before we say the pledge, could everybody make sure that they turn off their cellphones? There's been a request for that before the meeting starts. And doing that, please can you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel President Fogarty?
Here.
Counselwoman McAtee?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil?
Here.
Counselwoman Whaley?
Here.
All members present, Council Vice President Eddy is absent.
Next, we have approval of the minutes of previous meetings from the work session of October 25th, 2010. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the minutes from the work session dated October 25th, 2010.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a meeting minutes from the regular session of October 25th, 2010.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular session of October 25th, 2010. Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda, if anybody would like to remove something from the consent agenda, let me know. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda? Second.
Moved in seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to licenses. License A is a resolution to defer consideration of license items 6B through 6I until after the public hearing, 7A relative to the renewal of liquor licenses. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously, so we're going to move now to new business items. A. Buried in there. Public hearing relative to the renewal of liquor licenses for the year beginning December 1st, 2010, said licenses are granted contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes as an user fees and arrears to the town, and a correction of any fire code violations. Application for license to sell intoxicating beverages under the provision of Title III of the General Laws of 1956 as amended have been filed at the offices as followed. Now review each class, and if there's any questions from anybody, they can come forward. Class A retailer is from Jaber's Liquors, 231 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield. Patsy's Package Store Incorporated, 520 High Street, Peace Dale, Rhode Island. Sweeney's Package Store Incorporated, DBA Sweeney's Wine and Spirits, 408 Main Street, Wakefield Liquors, 667 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Is there any questions with Class A? Okay, we'll move on to Class B. Class B victueller is 333 Main Street Incorporated, DBA Fat Bellies Irish Pub, 333 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island. 629 Succotash LLC, DBA Matunik Oyster Bar, also at 629 Succotash Road, Wakefield. Applebee's Restaurant North LLC, DBA Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, 15 Commons Corner Way. Bobby G's Incorporated, DBA Bobby G's Pub, 703 Kingston Road. Captain Jack's Incorporated, DBA Captain Jack's Restaurant, 706 Succotash Road. Casey's Incorporated, DBA Casey's Grill and Bar, 191 Old Tower Hill Road. Chen's Restaurant Incorporated, 60 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield. Dave Barnes Development Incorporated, DBA The Muse Tavern, 456 Main Street, Wakefield. Hanson's Pub LLC, 210 Salt Pond Road, Wakefield. Italian Village, DBA Italian Village Restaurant, 195 Main Street, Wakefield. Kevin V. Finnegan, DBA Ocean Mist, 895A Matunik Beach Road. Kingstown Sushi Incorporated, DBA Kabuki, 91 Old Tower Hill Road. Laurel Food and Beverage Incorporated, DBA Laurel Lane Country Club, 309 Laurel Lane. Old Mountain Lanes Incorporated, DBA Old Mountain Lanes, 756 Kingstown Road. Pegasus Pizza Incorporated, DBA Estia Pizza and Restaurant, 28 Old Tower Hill Road. Penelli's Caccina Twist Incorporated, DBA Caccina Twist, 2095 Kingstown Road. Pump House Incorporated, 1464 Kingston Road. Roadie Joe's LLC, 515 Kingstown Road. Rose Hill Golf Club Incorporated, 220 Rose Hill Road. Shogun Steak and Sushi House II Incorporated, 59 South County Commons Way. The Tipperary Tavern LLC, DBA Tara Mulroy's Joyce's Family Pub, 907A Matunik Beach Road. Torrey Two Corp, DBA Totorio Romano South, 8 Preservation Way. That's the end of the Class B victueller. Any questions regarding those? Next is Class B tavern. Bistro by the Sea, 364 Cod's Pond Road, Wakefield. South Kingstown Hotel Association LLC, DBA Holiday Inn, South Kingstown, 3009 Tower Hill Road, Wakefield. Any questions on the Class B tavern? Moving on to Class B hotel. South Kingstown Hotel Associates LLC, DBA Holiday Inn, South Kingstown, 3009 Tower Hill Road. That's the end of the Class B hotels, if there's any questions. Moving on to Class B limited. JSR Corp, DBA Tony's Pizza Palace, 1916 Kingstown Road, Peace Dale. Loomis Holding Corp, DBA DBA's Pizza, DB's Pizza, 546 Kingston Road. Phil's Kitchen Incorporated, DBA Phil's Grill, 323 Main Street. Any question regarding those? Nope. We move on to Class D. Club Full Privilege, The Elks Club of South Kingstown, number 1899 at 60 Belmont Avenue. And the URI Board of Governors Faculty Center, 95 Upper College Road. That's the end of the Class D victueller license. So again, if there's any questions regarding any of these, if anybody has to come forward?
Kath, I think that I should probably recuse myself in reference to the Phil's license, and I don't know how you want to handle that.
Just the Phil's aren't all of them.
Just the Phil's.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to close the public hearing, I guess, first at this point. So I have a motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Seconded, any other discussion?
Should I made that amended with Ella excusing herself from?
To close it, no, I didn't think so. To close it, no. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so why don't we move, have a motion to move excluding the Phil's? I should let you guys make the motion. No, 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 not you. Keep you out of it completely, actually.
Where is this motion?
You make it, I can't make it.
I move approval of public hearing A with the amendment of Phil's Kitchen Inc., DBA Phil's Grill.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Okay, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Now we'll have a motion on the other item.
I move approval of public hearing A as it relates to Phil's Kitchen Inc., DBA Phil's Grill.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three, zero, with one abstention. All right? Okay.
One recusal.
One recusal, I'm sorry. Yes, recusal, right. Recusal. Okay, we will move on back to licenses. And we're going to go through, I don't know if we can group these together, can we go group B through I? Can I have a motion to group B through I that we held off at the first license?
So moved.
Okay. B through I?
Second.
I made the motion, didn't I? Why don't you say it?
I make a motion that we group licenses A through I.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Should it be B through I?
A through I, isn't it? Hold on, I'm sorry.
A through I.
Yep, A through I.
B through I, all right.
A through I.
It's been moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, we got all the licenses all taken care of.
I'll have to color code these from now on.
A lot of business going on in town. Next, we move on to communication items. On page eight for the rest of the council. Page eight, communication A is a communication dated October 20th, 2010, from Susan A. Gustatis, Executive Director Johnny Cake Center of Peace Dale, providing statistical information on their services and encouraging donations of supplies for their programs and initiate, excuse me, inviting council members to join the annual Thanksgiving Day food basket distribution at the food pantry is received and placed on file. Council have anything to add to that? Ella?
Just that it was very successful in all that they give back to our town. It's just absolutely wonderful endeavor in this economic difficult time for a lot of families, so we would be honored. Beautiful.
Yeah, it's information that we wish we didn't have to see this continued growth of those in need, but times are very difficult out here in our community. But we thank them for their continued great work and look forward to helping them prior to Thanksgiving.
I'd also like to thank the Johnny Cake Center and all they do and provide for the community, and their Thanksgiving Day food basket distribution will be November 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the emergency food pantry. So it's an honor to be there to help distribute the Thanksgiving baskets.
The council, we did this last year as a council, and since we have the same council this coming year, it was a very rewarding night, I think, for all of us, and we were just talking before the meeting that we'll all be there before the council meeting to hand out baskets. But I think what Susan was really asking is that if anybody, you know, to encourage, you know, people out there that they are, and they're always in need of help, but if anybody wants to donate, this is really the time of the year that they really need it the most, so make a visit to the Johnny Cake Center. So do I have a motion to place this on file? Is there a motion?
I move to place Communication 8A on file.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution adopted October 13th, 2010 by the Bolreville Town Council in support of general assembly legislation to enact an extended producer responsibility program and environmental policy approach in which those who produce and use products, be it the cost of recycling and responsible disposal, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. What does the council like to do on this?
Well, we discussed this at the work session, and I believe in these economic times that we didn't want to put any more pressure on businesses, so we decided we would place it, although it's a good idea for recycling, that everyone recycle, I believe we'd rather not put more restrictions on business at this time, and place this on file. Second.
Moved in seconded, any other discussion?
I think Carol's right, I think encouragement is the way we need to go right now, and hopefully businesses understand how important it is to follow through with their products, but right now, we certainly don't need another hammer on business.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, next we move on to comments from interested citizens. If there's anybody who would like to come forward, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Mary Adkins. I spoke at the last meeting to express my concern about the distributed antenna system units that are being installed all over town, otherwise known as DAS units. For people in the audience who didn't attend the last meeting, DAS are multiple antenna nodes, also known as repeaters, that mount on existing telephone poles and wires. They're used for wireless communication and emit pulse radio frequency and microwave radiation. The DAS units in my neighborhood consist of a black cylindrical box that hangs off the wires, utility wires, and connect to a metal box that mounts on the telephone pole. These units are, in fact, the equivalent of putting a cell tower right in your front yard. Last meeting, I described in detail how these devices have been making me very ill, with symptoms of fatigue, weakness, muscle spasms, nausea, and migraines, among many others. The day after I spoke to the council, I hired a certified professional to measure radiation levels in my home and yard. My house is a few hundred feet from the DAS at the end of my street. It was expensive to hire this individual, so I opted not to have her draft a formal report, as that would have added to the cost. Instead, she recorded her readings on a worksheet, a copy of which I've included in this package. The specialist I hired recorded a pulsed power density of 2,400 microwatts per meter squared, right at the corner of Peaked Rock Road and Allen Avenue, which is only approximately 20 to 30 feet from the house on the corner. This number is equivalent to .24 microwatts per centimeter squared. This level of radiation is considered to be of extreme concern, especially for those people living in houses right near the DAS. Luckily, I live further down the street, but frankly, I feel sick about the people living down by the corner. In fact, the woman who took these readings said if she were living in one of those houses, she would be packing her bags immediately. As she continued down the street, she recorded the following levels. 1,340 microwatts per meter squared at the house number 200, 450 at house number 185, 39 at house number 174, and 33 at house number 159. So it did drop as you continued down the street, but for those individuals living towards the end of the street, it's quite high. Even at levels as low as 33 microwatts per meter squared, which is equivalent to .0033 microwatts per centimeter squared, which was recorded a few hundred feet away, the following biological effects are known to occur. Sleep disorders, abnormal blood pressure, nervousness, weakness, fatigue, limb pain, joint pain, digestive problems, effects on the immune system, and altered EEG. At .24 microwatts per centimeter squared, which is the level right at the unit itself and the neighboring houses, the above health effects and more are known to occur. Things like altered white blood cell activity in children, cardiac arrhythmias, change in calcium ion efflux from brain tissue, impaired motor function, reaction time, memory, and attention in children, twofold increase in childhood leukemia, infertility, decreased cell growth, changes in melatonin levels, disturbed carbohydrate metabolism, altered adrenal hormone levels, and structural changes in liver, spleen, testes, and brain. Remember, these units are going up all over town, with many literally outside people's bedroom windows. They are emitting this radiation 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In my front yard, which is a few hundred feet away, the certified professional recorded pulses of 2,400 microwatts per meter squared, which is equivalent to the full strength signal recorded right next to the unit itself. Levels in my front yard where my children play were 168 microwatts per meter squared, again, a very dangerous level, a few hundred feet away. Levels inside my home, in my bedroom, reached as high as 37 microwatts per meter squared. I cringe at the thought of the radiation levels inside those homes, right near these devices. As I explained at the last meeting, current safety standards adopted by the FCC are inadequate to protect public health because they are not biologically based. Something needs to be done. I have a request for help in to someone who was involved in a similar effort in Hempstead, New York. But in the meantime, I again implore the town council to issue a moratorium to stop any further installation of wireless communication antennas of any kind in South Kingstown until this matter can be properly reviewed. Local officials have a responsibility to take action when our state and federal agencies fail to protect us. A review process needs to be put into place. It's my understanding, and this isn't on the material I'm going to give you, but it's my understanding that, again, I think I explained this last time, we can't stop them from putting these devices in because they cause health problems. However, we do have a right as a town to put ordinances into place so that there's an actual review process, because there are avenues by which you can request that they be placed in other areas. And I went through those last time, in terms of property values, aesthetics, things of that nature. I feel very strongly that people in town have a right to know that these DAS units have been installed and that there are potential health effects. This radiation is invisible, and because of this, it is even more dangerous. Residents whose homes are close to these DAS units are not even aware they've been installed, and they do have a right to know this. I'm willing to assist in any way that I can, and I'm asking that you please do something before more people are irreversibly harmed.
Are you going to give us a packet?
Yes.
Do you want to give it to Dale?
Yep. Can I ask if, I know everybody was busy with the election, can I ask if anyone's had time to look at the material that I passed in last time?
I gave a general overview of the, I did not get into all of it, and I wanted to go to that website that you had in, from New York, and I have not had a chance to go through that. So just some general overview of some of the stuff that you sent me. I don't know about the rest of the council, I haven't had a chance to talk to any of them about it.
Did anyone else have a chance to look at it?
No, I haven't. I asked, I think Steve and Andy have had a chance to look at some of the websites. My concern is, well, two concerns. One, as a community municipality within a state, maybe Steve, you could help us out with how we can either encourage or how do we ask the government, particularly the communications folks, what do they know? What can we do? Or is there nothing we can do, and that's a, just a rule that's in place?
As I indicated earlier to the council, I would say that the issue that's before you is not one that's going to be addressed at the local level. Certainly, all of the information that you have indicates that the Federal Communications Act, Section 704, bars the town from prohibiting those installations. The issue really is a federal government issue. It's an issue that really, only through direction under Congress, is there going to be changes in the statute, or there are going to be changes that would be associated with the biological effects of the radiation. And it may be well that the information be forwarded to the legislative delegation and request them to provide comment on whether they see concerns with the current level of regulation provided at the federal level. They've created the situation by superseding both state and local regulatory authority in terms of the sighting of antennas and the DAS units. So I think the question really needs to go to the federal level to say, are you comfortable based on the information on both sides of the table? Because there are people that would argue that this is not a problem for somebody to provide some type of a statement. There have been statements made through the EPA questioning or indicating that right now, the only regulations and standards that are there deal with thermal, and that they do not deal with the biological. I don't know whether that's the end line, or whether that's just one of the arguments that are being made on the other side of the table. But I think that it may be a question that should be brought forward to our congressional delegation and senatorial delegation, to have them provide us with their interpretation of what the standards are, or what steps they're taking to provide better information. But it's not something that we're going to be able to do in 39 different cities and towns, or in the 50 states. It's really going to be part of what the, what central government needs to address. You know, this is an issue that's going on not just in the United States, it's worldwide. And I can't say that Mary's wrong in what her concerns are, nor can I say that she's right. And I think that at this point, if there's going to be any type of a independent determination made, it's going to need to be made through federal intervention.
Maybe is it overkill with the number of these DAS units put in place? Does that radial arm just cover every circle once and twice over? Do we have any information on that? Or do they put them at the furthest distance they can so the circles just touch? Do we have any idea whether there's overkill?
When the first application came in for the DAS sightings in town, we did an exhaustive review of what our regulatory authority was, and what our determination was, was that we did not have the ability to regulate, and that the sighting of those on utility poles was not even regulated through the Public Utilities Commission. Public Utilities simply provided authorization for licensing agreements between the pole owner, either Narragansett National Grid or AT&amp;T, to the providers on the DAS. The DAS units that have been placed in town were presented as being sighted based on where there were holes in coverage. And the holes were small enough where they could be covered with the DAS rather than attempting to bring a full-size antenna into those neighborhoods. So there was, the placement of those units were based on that type of a consideration. Once we reviewed the information that was provided, and in fact, South Kingstown, I think, has provided greater review with the legal reviews being done as to what our regulatory authority was, than I'm sure several of the other communities that have had this. But again, it's a case where they have the legal right to be there. If there isn't a federal standard that's protecting people from improper radiation dosages, it needs to come through the federal authorities.
So, just to wrap it up, just, so if Mary came through with a petition of hundreds of concerned folks, the best we can do is encourage our congressional delegation to...
I'm saying they're the only ones that are going to have the resources to be able to address this type of question, because if you were to consider an ordinance that provided regulatory authority similar to what Ms. Adkins has requested in the first letter that she sent with the eight proposals that she had in that letter, to have a 1,500-foot circumference around any installation of an antenna, it's interesting to note that that deals prospectively. It doesn't deal retroactively with all those facilities that are currently sighted in the community, nor does it deal with any that are going to be sighted prior to those type of regulations being put into effect. So if there is a way of dealing holistically with the issue, it's not going to be through local regulation because of the prospective nature of the ordinance requirements. It would have to come through some type of federal authority that is dealing with safety standards. And those safety standards don't exist at this point.
Can I make a couple of comments and ask a few questions? When you say that they had a gap in coverage, how did they technically prove that?
I wasn't involved with the direct discussion, the director of planning reviewed the information with those companies.
Because when you say that nothing can be done at the local level, I have to disagree with that, and this is what's going on in the town of Hempstead in Long Island. There is an ordinance in place that does provide for a review process, and there are certain steps that can be taken at the municipal level in terms of the sighting of these DAS units.
Again, with that ordinance, it's prospective in nature, it's not dealing with the issue. If, in fact, there is a problem that exists...
I understand.
...that ordinance is not dealing with the problem. That's the point I was making.
Right. And in terms of what can be done at the local level, there are things that can be done. In fact, there are many towns and municipalities in this country that are basically petitioning their senators and their congressmen and asking for the repeal of Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act. So when it comes from a town or municipality versus just one ordinary citizen, I think the senators and the congressmen take special note of that. So for example, the city of Los Angeles, Los Angeles Unified School District, has asked their senators and congressmen to repeal Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act because it only provides for protection against thermal effects and not biological effects. If our town would make a similar appeal, that could go a long way towards prompting our senators and our congressmen to do something about this. But in the meantime, there is a local ordinance that could... But in the meantime, there is a local ordinance that could be put into place. I'm trying to get a copy of the one from Hempstead right now, which would at least provide a review process, and give us more options than we seem to have right now, in terms of the sighting of these units. And it would be looking at things like technically proving that there's a gap in coverage, before allowing them to place the units. Looking at things like property values and aesthetics, which you do, under the federal law, have a right to refuse sighting of these units, based on property values and aesthetics. So these are avenues by which we could try to protect health, but do it in a legal way, using the existing law. The existing law is inadequate, and that is a fact, based on the science. Again, there are people in industry who would disagree with that, but I tend to put more weight on independent scientists than I do on industry scientists. So, under the law, there are provisions that will allow us to take steps to protect people, but do it in a legal way, by using property values, aesthetics, the Migratory Bird Act, for example. Those are all avenues that are open to us as a town. So again, also, you know, if there was something issued from the town to our congressmen and senators, that would also go a long way towards attempting to fix the problem at the federal level. But in the meantime, you have people who are living right next to these devices, who still don't know that they've been placed, who could be suffering health effects and don't know the source. And that's an ethical issue that I feel really needs to be addressed. I mean, there aren't, there are some people in town who don't pay attention to what goes on in town council meetings, or, you know, who wouldn't have access to this information. I believe they have a right to know that these units are placed outside their homes. In fact, I have a neighbor who told me that, one of our neighbors at the end of the street, their child had been sick for two weeks, and it coincidentally started when these units went up. Now, was it from the units? I don't know. I have no way to prove that. But what if that child remains sick? What if they develop a chronic health issue? Don't those people have a right to know what's radiating right near their home, so that they can then make a choice as to whether or not they want to stay there? I think this is information that the public has a right to know. So while we're trying to decide what we can or can't do as a town, I feel there's an obligation to let people know that these units have been placed. They are discreet, it's very difficult to detect them. The only reason I could detect them is because I have a meter that measures the radiation. The levels that this woman found on my street are alarming. From what I know, from over 2,000 hours of research on this subject, these are alarming levels of radiation. And the fact that the federal government allows this is inexcusable. And you're right, something does need to be done, and it needs to be done at the federal level. But in the meantime, as a town, we should do everything we can to protect our citizens, as we're able to, under the law, as it currently exists. And one of the things we can do is to let people know that they're there, and what the health effects possibly could be. I don't have an easy answer, I wish I did. I mean, I'm severely affected by these units, you know, and I've noticed that there are, there's a difference in terms of the amount of radiation that some of them are putting out, and I find it very coincidental that the ones that are putting out the most radiation are all situated at stop signs and red lights, where people are, you know, sitting still for a period of time, in many cases, a few minutes. And that's a huge concern, you know? Why in the world there are units that are emitting more at intersections where people are stopped, is, I don't, I don't know. I don't even want to propose a theory on that. But, you know, the people that are living right next door to them, it's a serious health hazard for them. It may be that the federal law allows this, but that doesn't excuse us from not informing them. There's nothing to stop us from informing them, and, and I believe they have the right to know, so...
No, I haven't suggested that people don't have the right to know.
I know. Yeah, I'm, I'm just restating that for the council, because I, I feel very strongly that, that something should be done in that regard. As I said, the woman that came to my home, she, she does this for a living, and she's a certified professional, and she said she would be packing her bags, she would not hesitate, even if she owned the home and, you know, couldn't sell, she said she wouldn't even ethically sell the home. She couldn't. She would be packing her bags. And I know for certain that these things have severely affected my health. There are young children playing all over my neighborhood, and most of the parents don't know that these things are there. You know, I, I feel that what's happening at a federal level is a travesty. As a town, I think we should do everything we can to change that. And if anyone has other suggestions, I'd love to hear them. There are people like me all over this country, trying to get something done about this, and we, we could certainly use the support of our, our local people in the town to help us.
Steve, who would we call for the installers? I guess I would find it hard to believe that we're not fully and totally covered townwide at the moment. I can't imagine too many gaps left, so we're, we're looking forward. I guess my question to you, Mary, is, if you're next to this thing, or 1,000 feet away, is the service equal in quality?
Well, that's a good question.
Fade away, I did, help me out, that's why I asked about the radial arm.
As far as the radiation levels, it does fade away the further away you get from it. But, in fact, you know, I, as I said, I live a few hundred feet away from this unit, and in my front yard, we picked up pulses at full power, at the 2,400-microwatt level. So, they're going for very long distances.
But the service is still of equal quality?
Well, and that's why I was asking about, is there, have they technically proved a gap in coverage? Because as far as I know, the people that live in my neighborhood that use cellphones, I don't use a cellphone, but the people I know that do, they've never had a problem getting service. So, one of the things that other towns are doing in this review process that I talk about, when they do enact an ordinance, is demanding that these companies prove technically that there's a gap in coverage, because if there isn't, they have no reason to place these, at all. So if people in my neighborhood have been able to get cellphone coverage just fine, why in God's name are we now putting dozens of these units all over my neighborhood? There's no reason for it.
That was my question, are, are built out of this, or is there a way to calm this?
Right. So these are some of the things that we can do under the law. We can demand that they prove technically that there's a gap in coverage, not just say there's a gap in coverage, but prove it with documentation. That is one way to eliminate any more of these installations from going up. Another thing we can use is property values. If people have a DAS unit in front of their house, their property value is going to go down. Right now, a lot of people aren't aware of what these units are, but there is a national campaign to educate the public about this. And soon, everyone is going to know what they are, and when they do, people will not want to buy your house if you have one of these units out front. It's just like having a cell tower in your backyard. Nobody wants a house that's near a cell tower, and no one's going to want to buy a house that's near one of these. So, the Migratory Bird Act, that's another avenue. You can actually deny a placement of one of these units based on the Migratory Bird Act, but not for health effects. As absurd as that sounds, that is the truth. So we have avenues open to us, and what I'm asking the council to do is to explore these options. As I said, I'm trying to get a copy of the ordinance from Hempstead, that will give us some guidance as to how to go about this. And as soon as I get that, I'll forward it to you. But I, I really am begging you to do everything that you can to stop further placement of these units, and to inform the public, and to consider writing to our congressmen and our senators, and all the way up to the president, the governor, everyone, to inform them that Section 704 is, you know, it's, it's harming our health. This law, which was written by the industry, and deregulated the industry, is harming millions and millions of people in this country. And the more towns that we have standing up to our government officials and saying, "This is unacceptable, you know, you're endangering our citizens," the, the greater the likelihood that we'll be able to get it changed. So I'm asking all of you to please consider doing that, and I'll get you the information that I, I get from Hempstead as soon as possible.
Why don't you get us that information, and then we can discuss about maybe a resolution up to our congressional and senatorial district about that Section 704.
Okay. And I, again, I'm willing to do anything I can. I've done an awful lot of research on this, and I will also offer, again, to take any of you on a drive around town, so that you can hear for yourselves the amount of radiation that's in our town. As I said before, it's invisible, so people are very complacent about it, and they don't realize that it's there. When you have a meter, like the one that I have, that converts it to an audio signal, you will be shocked at how much radiation is in this town already. And that's why any further placement of devices like this needs to be carefully considered. So I'd offer to you, again, to take a ride around town with you, so that you can hear for yourself just what's out there. It's very difficult, when something is intangible, to realize the magnitude of it. When you have an audio meter that puts it in a, in a way that your senses can detect, it, it puts a whole nother level to it. So I, I offer that again to any of you, at any time.
Kathy, let me make sure that we're clear. My recommendation wasn't to ask to have Section 704 repealed. My suggestion to you was that to send the information that's been collected, and forward it to the council, to the senatorial and congressional delegation, and to ask them to review it, and to determine whether they believe that there's appropriate standards in place today for the protection of health and safety. If one was to suggest the repeal of Section 704, without providing any type of standards to allow regulation to occur on, there would be no regulation. Because as soon as you have a public hearing to put regulations into effect, the industry, as they were in Hampton, on September 21st, when they first considered the ordinance, are going to be there to attest to the fact that, that this is not a safety issue. You're not going to place the council in a position, or any local, community officials, in a position where they're going to be able to argue the merit of your case, or the demerit of the industry's case. It needs to be done through some type of study, that is going to be through independent consultants, that are going to be providing the information through, whether it's congressional committees, and the forging of federal legislation. But to simply ask for the section to be withdrawn, which prohibits the regulation, without providing the standards, is as dangerous a situation as having the regulations in effect, if, in fact, your argument is correct.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we repeal it without replacing it with biologically based standards, so let me be clear on that. And I'm also not suggesting that you have an argument with the industry at a public hearing about health effects, because we already know that you can't deny placement of the units because of health effects. That's not what I'm suggesting at all. What I am suggesting is looking at the other towns throughout this country, that are asking for the repeal of Section 704, and to hopefully join those other towns in asking that it be repealed, and that it be replaced, that the thermal standards that are in place be replaced with biologically based standards.
And I want to clarify that that's actually what I wrote down here, about reviewing the section for that. I said, "You've had thermal testing, but we need to look at biological effects," and then a technical review of the gaps in coverage, about, that's what we would pass on as a resolution, not to repeal that.
Right.
That's something we can get to in step process. So, that's what I caught from it, that's what I think that we'll put in a resolution, if the council, you know, agrees to that. And that's what I think we should, go ahead, Kathy.
I just want to say, Mary, in your comment, you said, "You've studied this for 2,000 hours."
Over, yeah.
You know, we, we really are not as familiar with it, and you make a very compelling argument, no doubt, but we did discuss it earlier at the work session, and Mr. Alfred brought us up to snuff on some of the material that you've given him, and that, because we were all here last, two weeks ago, when we heard you give your statement as to what the problem is. But for many of us, myself, I can't speak for everyone, but I think we really need some time, and this is the type of thing that you can't learn overnight.
Right.
You know, we can't do anything right away. This would have to be looked at, studied, you know, and that all takes a lot of time, like you said, 2,000 hours of your own time.
I understand that. I guess what, what motivates me here, in coming here, again, is, is, with what I know, I, I am very concerned, particularly for the people that are living right near these units. And I, that's why I strongly recommend that you get up to speed as soon as you can, but I do understand there's a huge learning curve involved, and in fact, you know, I've been studying it for a very long time now. And I was motivated by two very sick children. So, you know, I, I had a lot more, I guess, impetus to do something about it, but I, I understand completely. But that's why I'm saying, I'm at your disposal, if there's anything that you want to ask, any research, I mean, I have an inordinate amount of research that I could share, so I'm willing to meet with you privately, you know, however I can help, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Okay? Thank you.
Question, Stella?
Yeah, Mary, I just have a question. With all of the research that you've done, have there been any experimentation to protect individuals that are real, highly sensitive, such as you?
The only avenue we have for that is basically like shielding material in your home. That doesn't protect you when you're out in your car, when you're out in public, when you're walking the streets. There's, there's no protection. I mean, this is one of the reasons that Section 704 is so damaging. It, it basically allowed the industry to proliferate wireless devices without any safety testing. And so, our bodies, you know, we're, we're considered collateral damage, basically. The industry is, you know, racking up billions in profits, and all of us are suffering the health effects. And I can show you studies from the Karolinska Institute in Sweden, which hands out the Nobel Prize for Medicine, that clearly demonstrates that the advent of wireless technology began the decline of the overall health of the population. That's a, that's a scientific study that was completed by them. So, you know, this, this Section 704 was very damaging to the public. And so as far as protection, no, there's not much that people like I can do, you know, that myself could do. And, and for the general public, who maybe isn't highly sensitive, the problem is, if, if we are to look at what the scientists are telling us, you may not be highly sensitive now, but by 2017, 50% of the population will be, because of the, the enormous amount of radiation that's now out there. And you're talking about co-located installations, where you have multiple cell towers, and multiple DAS units, and multiple YMAX units going simultaneously. I mean, there is just no long-term cumulative studies to, to look at the effects of that. It's a huge public health problem. So the more that our towns can get involved with this, and try to prompt our, you know, upper levels of government to do something, the better.
Can you, radiation, the 2,400 number, any way to even measure that against, when I sit in a dentist's chair, and they take an X-ray, my mouth, and I'm covered with a shield?
That's two different types of radiation.
Different types of radiation, but you can't somehow or another equalize those to some extent?
I can tell you that the non, this is non-thermal, considered non-thermoral radiation. I can tell you that the long-term chronics of, chronic effects of non-thermoral radiation are equally damaging as the effects of the type of radiation that you're talking about from X-rays, gamma rays, things of that nature, the ionizing.
Just trying to get some weighting.
There, it's all damaging, particularly with chronic, long-term exposure. And that's what we're talking about. When you have a unit right outside your bedroom window, going 24 hours a day, that's a long-term chronic exposure. So it may not heat tissue the way that ionizing radiation does, like an X-ray does, but the long-term effects are equally deadly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay. Any other comments? Nope? Oh.
I'm sorry.
Steve, I'm actually asking the council, is there some way that we could ask our General Assembly members, new members, old members, but the, have them in here in December, before they get busy in January? I think we really need to be on the same page with our delegation to establish our concerns, early on, where they stand. I'd love to have a meeting with them in December, to...
I, I think that's probably what we'll probably end up doing. I know the school committee is also looking to get them in, in December. Probably would not be a bad idea to maybe meet together, so maybe we could work that out between the two.
I know. Every time we meet together, we have seven and five, we've got 12 people with questions. I could spend three hours with them and not finish.
Want to do alone, that's fine, too.
Yeah, no, I'd, I'd really love the council...
We'll have to see what their availability is.
All right. But is, is there something, direct, Steve, towards, see if you can put together a date?
I think Steve and I actually had talked about something like that, to the legislators in December, getting into that wonderful budget season that we're...
In Thursday's packet, I'll provide the council with a series of meetings for budget development, first one which would be in December. If you want, we can try to add a couple of other dates to keep open, to see if we can get the legislators to meet. The only thing you'll need to tell me collectively is whether you want that with the school committee or without the school committee.
Do you not want it with the school committee?
Just, every time we meet with them, there's just never enough time. I mean, I want to go to 12 or one, I'd be happy to, but honestly, I, I have enough to keep them busy for two or three hours.
Is that all right with the rest of the council?
So you are asking for two separate dates, one with the legislators and one with...
If it's possible, yeah. I mean, the schools are going to be talking about the education funding formula and school budgets, obviously, but I think we've got a ray of issues.
Yeah, I think the legislators...
URI, to our hospitals, to our row, I mean, we, we really have, I mean, we are in charge of, of this community. We, we look at all the facets, all the areas that the budget concerns are going to bring forward. And I, I'm just worried, once we lose control of them in January through June, it's, it's going to be a very busy year, and we'll, it will never seem again.
I, I do think that the legislators do need to hear the dialogue between the town council and the school committee. I mean, that is going to be a heavy item that we focus on, I, I believe.
Well, they can work on their own date and we'll work on our own date. Okay.
Try to get a couple of dates.
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, Ella?
Thanks, Kathy. I just wanted to bring you some of the news from the chamber. Tomorrow, they're doing a lean and green workshop, talking about recycling. It is tomorrow from 8:00 to 9:00 at the chamber. The cost is free, and it's for businesses to look at the environmental waste and using lean and green tools and techniques, so it can reduce cost. So we did mention that recycling at businesses this morning, there's an opportunity for the businesses in town. I also stopped by on Friday to look at the banners that they have, Adopt a Banner sponsorship program, absolutely beautiful. There are still some available for some of the businesses, so they're going to be going up around town, and I really think that it's, you know, quite nice. And then there's a blood drive, December 4th, 11:00 to 2:00. And last but not least, there is an annual coat drive. So if anybody has any coats to keep children and adults warm, they'll take them at the chamber and bring them down to a further location.
What date is that?
The coat drive, there's not a specific date, but you can drop them off, yep, at the chamber. And last but not least, Steve, Mr. Icoy says you will get yours hand-delivered. It's the South Kingston Chamber of Business and Community Guide, so it's out. It's quite nice. And then last, I just wanted to mention some exciting events that happened in the community. There was a celebration at Broad Rock Middle School. I would say there was probably 75 to 100 people that gathered and walked down and had a parade to a little youngster, young adult, fifth grader with the Dennis Moffett makeover. So it was quite an exciting time, and really exciting time for the family. And then there was the education exchange, I think that we were all at. Absolutely a warm, welcoming place for our community, and I know that they have some great goals set for educating a lot of the youth and adults in our town. And there was also the chamber annual dinner, which a few of us attended, and it was absolutely delightful, and many awards were given to some of the people in town. And I know, Kathy, you mentioned the South Kingston Educational Foundation, I did not go to that, but...
I did, I did go, we had something else that night, but I knew that other people had attended that, and they had a very big success, too, with their fundraiser they did a few months before. But Peggy Benz, I do want to give her kudos for the education exchange, because the building is absolutely beautiful, and I just, I, I know it's a big step up from what they had before. So one door opens, closes, another one opens, and they really, she was calling me lost without a place at the government center, and, you know, she was able to work out with the, the lily pads office space, and what a spot she's got now. So she was upset, but I think in the long run, that, that came true, you know, what a great place now. Okay, anything else? Jim?
Oh, yeah, Kathy, just maybe Andy or Steve could talk about Thursday's ceremonial parade activity, when Steve or Andy would like to cover that in their dialogue.
Terry's, Terry's parade, Terry, Terry...
Veterans Day Parade.
Veterans Day Parade, Thursday. Always like to give Terry some...
Andy used to do that, but Terry doesn't.
TV time.
The annual Veterans Day Parade, sponsored by the Vietnam Veterans Association and the VFW, and also the Town Recreation Department, will be held on Thursday, November 11th at 10:00 a.m. And it kicks off at the corner of Holly and Main Street, and the entire community is welcome to join us. At the end of the parade at Selkotucket Park, there will be a memorial ceremony in honor of veterans, and that will be directly following the parade.
Will there be snow on Thursday, Terry?
I don't think so. It looks, it looks like the weather will be fine for Thursday, so...
Good, good, all right.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. All right. We move to the town manager's report.
Ella and Terry said everything I was going to say.
Oh, wind right out of your sails.
Unless there's any questions, I yield.
Our town solicitor's report, Nancy? Okay, thank you, Nancy. Appointments, we covered this month's appointments. So we'll move on to new business items, and we're going to move on to new business item B, as a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Narragansett Dockworks Incorporated, 14 Gul Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island, for the following Village Green Improvement Project elements, pedestrian bridge, bridge abutments, masonry walls, and electrical upgrades in accordance with all bid and specifications in an amount not to exceed $69,397, including a contingency, and is further described in the memorandum from our leisure services director to the town manager dated November 1st.
As noted, the council's in receipt of a memo from, from Terry Murphy relative to this project. What's recommended to the council tonight is to award for several components of the improvements that are planned at the Village Green. These include the replacement of the pedestrian bridge, the concrete bridge abutments, and the granite wall installation, as well as electrical upgrades in the park. The cost that's been negotiated on this was a revision from an original bid that was more comprehensive. There were 17 components, the original bid, two companies bid, Roberts and Rocher and Narragansett Dockworks. Roberts and Rocher have withdrawn their bid from consideration, and there's been negotiation to reduce, reduce some of the costings that have been proposed by Narragansett Dockworks. The work that's being proposed for tonight is actually the lowest price of the two contractors, even if Roberts and Rocher were still able to do the project. In fact, it's about $51,000 less than what Roberts and Rocher had proposed. This project has about $250,000 in funding. We've spent, at this point, approximately $53,000, which was on the work for the design, play apparatus designs, as well as the ground cover. What we're looking to do now is for the replacement of the, the bridge, so it'll be handicapped, accessible bridge, as well as to provide for the electrical upgrading. What we expect is with the $250,000, 150 of that is from a DEM grant. It's a 70/30 funding grant, which means that for every $100 we spend, they replace, they reimburse us $70. So what we're looking at at this point is a project that will cost approximately $250,000 in total, but we've broken it out so that only certain portions of the entire project will be done out of house. We will be taking responsibility in-house for acquisition of a number of materials, as well as some of the labor that would have gone into this project. That which is specialty work, which we do not have the staff to be able to complete, we would put out as a second contract that hopefully the council will see in the next few months. So at this point, the only thing that's being requested and recommended is the authorization for Narragansett Dockworks for the replacement of the bridge, the abutments, the electrical upgrading, and the granite walls. The rest of the material will be coming forward to the council in future months. We're hopeful to have all of the materials purchased, as well as the contract for installation of the paving materials sometime next spring. But overall, we hope to be able to spend all of the $150,000 grant and match that with $100,000 that we have in capital budget funding from prior year's support for this project. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yeah, Judge, what a great asset. I, I guess I sometimes wish we could move forward. Could we do everything by next summer? On your wish list, all the money? Could we get it ready for next summer?
As detailed, Jim, on the...
I saw it.
On the second page of the memorandum, it shows you that we're expecting that we could spend $186,000, and we're showing how those materials would be spent. The town would buy about $77,000 in materials, and we would have another $45,000. But that would deal with all of the 17 components that were part of the project. That doesn't include any of the work that was involved or recommended in the original architectural plans for the development of a, of a stage area within the, within the green. I believe it also doesn't cover the cost of the seating area that would be on the, the gill side of the river. But it will get most of the work done. The playground equipment is not a part of this, this project at this point. It'll be subject to future funding requirements within the capital budget.
But with enough coordination, most of this could be accomplished before next year, next summer.
That's correct. You know, as I had said earlier to you, I'd like to see replacement on some of the recreation apparatus that's there, but that's not a component of the project. The existing units will continue to be used. We have replaced all of the swings, but with the replacement of the swings, there'll have to be boxing of the, the staging area itself with the placement of the soft materials. So that's all got to be done as well.
Dinosaur's going to stay, right? Dinosaur going to stay?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, it survived during one of the floods when its nose was just sticking out of the water, you know, so it's going to stay. It's going to stay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve new business item B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second it, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move to seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The meeting is adjourned at 8:32.